Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the city employee at the back of the room. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to let council know your opinion without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council Meeting stream live on Facebook, YouTube, X, and online at Goodyearaz.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call a regular meeting to order for March 24, 2025. See that everybody here is present. Please join me and welcome in Councilmember Beckles and the Pledge of Allegiance in invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather today. Grant us the wisdom to make decisions that enhance our community. May you guide us toward understanding and compassion for all. I pray for the flourishing of our diverse communities spiritually, socially, and economically. May our unity be an example to the world. And I send prayers for everyone in our city, county, state, and nation, and for our government. In his holy name, amen.
Now's the time for members of the public who wish to address the City Council on any non-agenda items within the jurisdiction of Goodyear. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have four.
Okay.
First up, Deanna Kirko.
Before you start, Deanna, the council will listen to comments and may take one of the following: respond to criticism, request a step and investigate, and report on the matter, request the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. You have three minutes. Timer, you'll see when you get to the 20-second part. Go ahead. You don't have to say your address, just that you're a resident.
Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Deanna Kirko. I am a resident of the city of Goodyear. I would like to share my thoughts this evening in response to recent conversations regarding the Goodyear Ballpark and anticipated renovations that will be requested by the teams as part of the negotiations for renewal of their contracts. An economic study was conducted by ASU in 2023 on the impacts of spring training. However, the study only illustrates one aspect of economic activity: only new dollars that flowed into the state. No mention of the outlay of dollars required to generate these revenues. These are the specific impacts for the city of Goodyear obtained through a public records request. With the limited time available tonight, I will share information on the previous five-year period. The five-year period includes the impact of COVID and the players' lockout. However, when compared to the full seasons of '23 and '24, the performance was very similar. Adjusted performance, or actually, the total general fund subsidy for the ballpark for that five-year period: $71 million. Adjusted performance after applying 100% of the AZSTA funds received: a $60 million cost to the city. Goodyear subsidy from general fund per attendee for spring training games, that's $128, and for all ballpark events, it's $131. For the city of Goodyear to break even with a 2.5% sales tax, attendees would need to spend in Goodyear per event $5,134. The amount that the ASU study states spending for spring training attendees: $421 a day. In my opinion, our current agreement is not a winning proposition for our city. My ask tonight is that in future negotiations with the teams, if an agreement is made, the ballpark provides income to the city or is net neutral to the city budget. So again, I ask: resolve the current situation, but please do not repeat the poor, financially burdensome decisions of the past. In my opinion, the ballpark subsidy funds could be better spent in our community in investments in road, infrastructure, public safety, and programs for our youth and seniors. Additionally, if the city has different information than I have found, I welcome that information, and I have copies of the information for review if desired.
Okay, thank you. What do we do? Pass that over to the city clerk? Information?
You have his information, contact information. We'll have staff reach out to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Well, good evening, everybody.
You know the game, so go ahead.
I know the drill.
Yes, you know the drill.
Yeah, I do know the drill, and thank you for your time. First of all, a quick shout-out to Mr. Lockett with HR. Is he in the room right now?
He's right there.
Thank you. Well done. He could teach a class on follow-up and communication, if you ask me. When I visited here, spoke with you all on March 3, I mentioned talking to you at subsequent meetings about topics, specific topics, as they relate to preserving the quality of life here in Goodyear for existing residents during this explosive growth. Tonight, I'd like to talk about a specific topic, and that's the formal communication that goes out to residents during a rezoning or a proposed land use project. The current ordinance, as you're probably well aware, is 15 days before a sign is put up for a public hearing. If you live within 500 feet of that proposed project, you get a notification in the mail. Talking to the residents that I live with and around up in Australia, that's insufficient, that footage or that communication. I'm going to give you an example. As you're well aware, there's a proposal to expand 1,000 acres south of the high school. It's a two-mile stretch. It's about a two-mile stretch along Australia Parkway. Right now, there are three very generic white-black written signs in two or three locations along that two-mile stretch, and unless you pull over and read that in detail, you can't see what it's about just from the road. So you're going by it. It's just another sign to most people. On that stretch, there's about 50 to 60 homes that got that letter. Okay? That's hundreds of homes in those adjacent communities that are above 500 feet that didn't get that letter. Okay? I think they're entitled to know what's going on with the proposed project as well. I believe I speak for the majority of the residents in the community that this zoning ordinance, the 500-foot rule, needs to be urgently expanded to include all residents in the adjacent communities. And that's not for just this project. I'm talking about any project that comes up. If you're putting a McDonald's in on a corner over here, as an example, the adjacent community and everybody in it needs to know what's going on with that corner, not just the houses that see it and that are 500 feet away. I made this exact proposal to planning and zoning back on the 12th of March. I was told I would get a phone call. I'm waiting for that phone call. I'll be expecting that phone call. So I'd like you to consider, I'd like planning and zoning, I'd like you all to consider taking a hard look at that ordinance and expanding it again to include all the residents in the adjacent community. Okay? Appreciate all you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
We'll take that information and provide some information back.
Next? Just naming whether you're a Goodyear resident.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Solomon Jadidi. I am a resident here in Goodyear. Come to you guys tonight to bring something to you guys' attention and ask a couple of questions. It's in regards to the Goodyear Municipal Code 11-1-8 subsection C. I'm not going to read it because I don't got the time, but it covers noise and noise ordinances, and it goes along with what happened two days ago, March 22. In my neighborhood, someone was having a party from pretty much sunup to sundown, and they wanted everyone to know about it, and it was pretty hard to ignore. This isn't just, you know, someone enjoying their pool in their backyard, playing a little music on their phone or a little speaker or nothing. They had the full band, everything. Tuba, you name it. And my question to you is: at what point is that going to be enforced? At what point can I, as a citizen here in Goodyear, you know, be able to expect some peace and quiet in the home that I pay taxes and choose to live here with? Because I was not the only one to complain about it. There was multiple calls to the non-emergency number, talked to numerous of my neighbors on the block, all, you know, having to deal with this noise, to which it wasn't dealt with till about 8:20 PM. It was the first time we got an officer out there, Officer Ahoyah, and then complaints went on through the night, and then at 11:22, another officer, Officer Camp, came by and told him, hey, keep it down. Basically, that's, and they have the number for that, 2025-14379 is the tracking number for that call. What's going on, man? Like, we got a culture here in Goodyear where people just don't want to be respectful. Like, the cars are bad enough with everything they got, you know? Scat pack exhaust, exhaust is pretty much deleted from the cars and the trucks. Just from the traffic, I can't even get any rest, and then you add the people playing the music and then partying on top of it. If everyone acted like that, no one would get any peace and quiet. If I wanted to go out and go, you know, roof off every time I had a birthday or anniversary or whatever, and everyone else did that, this place wouldn't be a cool place to live. Granted, not everyone does that, but that's what I'm bringing to you guys tonight. How are we going to enforce that? When, at what point do they actually get a ticket to let them know that every year, March 22, on their birthday, they can't just be letting the whole neighborhood know about it until sunup to sundown? Did I misinterpret that? Does anyone know what that municipality code's about? Is that pretty much what it is?
And I noticed the chief's taking some notes over there, so hopefully, you've got the information for this gentleman here? Chief, reach out.
And, okay, I appreciate, I want to add on to that. My brother's an officer, not in this state, but in another state, and I appreciate the stuff they get called to do, and they got a list. All day, they're waiting to respond to calls. If they come out giving people warnings, 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 that's adding to their list, man. At some point, just give them the ticket and make them learn. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next? Hello, Lacey. Just naming whether you're a Goodyear resident.
Yeah, hi, Council. My name's Lacey. I live here in Goodyear, been a resident 18 years, had my house built in 2005 just north of here, and this is going to be a mall. So, very excited. We have seen some fun stuff to do, loving GSQ, had family in town, we did all of the restaurants, had a fantastic time, except, not to piggyback off of that, gentlemen, the revving of the cars up and down in front of the road in front of the movie theater while we're trying to sit outside at Copper and Sage. Same car three times, of speeding up and down, obnoxious. I live right up here all the time, up and down Pebble Creek, all the time, revving those, whatever they are, I don't know, I'm not a car person. The other thing, the real reason that made me come in today is, we are having a hard time in my community because we have had two very bad accidents. We just had a motorcycle death on Cambridge, and then we had a T-boning today at 2:30 right up here at the road. The traffic is getting a little bit, you know, not out of control, but it's, we're seeing it. What I would like to say is that when we were over here this weekend, having a great time, I was a little disappointed. There was no police presence. Sorry, Chief, I know you're new and figuring everything out, and appreciate you being here on the team. But you go to, like, a Westgate or anything, usually there's an officer hanging out, you see a police presence, or someone there. When we went to leave, there was somebody very impaired on the wrong side of the road trying to go through the intersection. The cars were trying to turn in and couldn't because he was on the wrong side of the lane. You build an entertainment district where you have bars and restaurants, there probably should be a little more presence. But again, beautiful facility, I'm so glad it's here, very excited, it's been 18 years. So.
Thank you. City manager, maybe we can talk to the chief, maybe we get some more people out there.
We will. We'll have a conversation, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, Mayor. That's it.
That's it? All right, thank you. With the city clerk, please read a consent agenda, items one through eight by title only.
Item one: approval of minutes. Item two: approval of a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Shake Shack, number 1515. Item three: approval of a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for the Breakaway Bar and Grill. Item four: permanent extension of premises patio permit for Sip at the Ranch. Item five: approved budget amendments and related expenditure authority. Item six: adopt resolution number 2025-2454, approving the modification of assessment number 11-01-008 within the McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District. Item seven: adopt resolution number 2025-2455, authorizing the submission of an application for land and water conservation funds to Arizona State Parks and Trails, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents relating to said applications, and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement if grant funds are awarded, and authorizing the city manager to approve the required budget transfer if grant funds are awarded. Item eight: adopt resolution number 2025-2456, authorizing the submission of an application for fiscal year 2026 Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority, biennial grant funds to the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents relating to said applications, and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement if grant funds are awarded, and authorizing the city manager to approve the required budget transfer if grant funds are awarded.
Thank you. Does anybody on council wish to remove an item or have a question on an item?
I have a question on item five.
Okay, hold on, we got item five? How about you?
Item... Six. I have seven.
Okay, we'll try five first. Go ahead. Who's got five? Ah, there he is. Go ahead, Benita.
Item five, the last chart, on item five? The last item on the chart. Move funds from Budgetary Authority to the Development Impact Fee Funds. Could you explain budget authority?
You're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Beckles. So, when we're looking to include an expenditure into the budget that wasn't originally in the budget, there's two components to that. One is, do we have the money to pay for it? And the second is, do we have authorization in the budget? And the authorization in the budget is regulated by state statute. So normally, we have contingent amounts that we include in the budget. So when something unforeseen comes up, we can tap that budget authority when we have the funds available to do so. In the case of the Development Impact Fees, we don't necessarily have a contingency within the individual impact fees. So the budget authority is a blanket budget authority that we have adopted en masse for unforeseen items such as this. So the budget authority that's being referenced is that contingent amount that we have included in the budget, the funds that are actually coming from the fund balance within each of the Development Impact Fees.
Good? Go ahead.
I just had a question. I'm okay with the applying for the grant. I just, is the dog park staying at the same park, or is it moving to a different location? It didn't really, it was very clear in the, in the actual part here.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hampton, Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director.
Yep, there you go.
Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director. That is correct. It's relocating the dog park within the current site of the Goodyear Community Park. So it's staying on that location, it's moving approximately 100 or so feet to allow that area to be expanded and install more permanent amenities with that feature.
No, I'm okay with that. It wasn't clear if it was staying at the actual location or if it was moving somewhere different. I'm all for the grant, and will the grant facilitate the entire move, or would that be a more general?
It will fund approximately half of those improvements.
Okay. Okay, yeah, definitely needed there, so I appreciate that it's staying there, so that's all I had, curiosity. Thank you.
You'll be okay? All right, with that, let's see, I have a motion and a second up on the board. You can go ahead and open it up, vote. Pass is 7-0. Thank you. We have three public hearings tonight. First public hearing is to collect public comment on the fiscal year 2026 Action Plan for Housing and Urban Development for the CBG program. Open the public hearing. Please introduce yourself to the public.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I am Christina Panatescu, Community Partnerships Program Manager for the city of Goodyear, and this is the public hearing for our fiscal year 26 Community Development Block Grant Annual Plan, which explains how we intend to use our allocation from HUD for, which is an entitlement, should it be awarded once the budget is finalized. So tonight, I'm going to go over the five-year consolidated plan, which we're operating off of, and which describes what the constraints are around how we are able to expend the funds. I'm going to give you all an update on the program performance since 2021, when we got our first award as an entitlement, and then I will explain what we're planning to do for fiscal year 26 and next steps. As a reminder, in order to spend our entitlement, the activities that we spend it on has to meet the national objective of benefiting low and moderate-income persons. This can either be based on financial eligibility or an area benefit, shaded in the orange on the map here, where a majority of the residents in that community or census tract are low or moderate income, or presumed benefit populations are the target population served by what is being funded, and some of those include abused children, battered spouses, elderly people, severely disabled adults, et cetera. In addition to serving low and moderate-income people, it has to fit Um, in addition to serving low and moderate income people, it has to fit into one of the priority activities identified in our consolidated plan, which would be a community facilities, uh, and improvements project, public services, which is basically direct services provided to individuals in need, program administration, which is very complex. And also, uh, if something exceptional presented itself, we could consider attainable and sustainable housing projects or economic development activities. There are reporting requirements, uh, for each category. So in fiscal year 22, uh, with our first entitlement, we invested in, um, adding LED streetlights, uh, to the North Subdivision's neighborhood and illuminating a pedestrian corridor, making the neighborhood safer. In fiscal year 23, we remodeled the childcare, uh, center in, or the, um, in the Domestic Violence Center, New Life Center here in Goodyear, making staff more accessible and youth more visible and giving a safe and effective place, uh, for those children in the shelter. In fiscal year 2024, we put an impressive, um, adaptable, uh, playground at Palmentier Park in historic Goodyear. And with, uh, this year's entitlement, we will be adding streetlights along Litchfield Road in front of historic Goodyear to make sure that it's brighter in the evening and more safe for the community and the motorists in the area. And that project is in the design stage right now. So for fiscal year 26, we don't know how much exactly we're going to get yet as our entitlement. There was a CR that was passed, so we expect it will be along the lines of what we got last year unless there are new communities that enter the mix. In the meantime, we've been planning, um, using a number and percentages, um, that can be adapted when we get our final allocation. So the recommendation in the draft annual plan is that we will use 20% of the city's entitlement for the complex administration of the program, up to 15% of the city's total entitlement for teacher salaries for the Southwest Valley YMCA Early Learning Center Program, which will be expanded as a result of the construction and equipment investment with the balance of our funds, um, that will make the Early Learning Center more accessible to the community and make the classrooms more age appropriate. Currently, the classrooms at the Southwest Valley YMCA have age groups, um, combined. That is detracting from parents' interest in keeping their kids in the program. So this will make it more desirable, age appropriate, and increase their capacity to serve Goodyear children. So we are at the public hearing part right now. The whole annual plan is available on the city's website, uh, goodyearaz.gov/cdbg. Um, that public hearing process closes on April 10th. I will be back with any public comment incorporated into the final plan for you to adopt, um, or authorize the submission of the final plan on May 5th. Hopefully by then we'll know an exact dollar amount. Um, and then we have to submit the plan to HUD by May 15th. And, um, so that May 5th meeting will enable that. HUD will approve our plan and the funds should be available after July 1st. And that concludes my presentation.
Any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, you know, this is a public hearing tonight is to collect public comments and we do not have any action to take, but does council have any comments they would like to make?
Thank you.
Saying none? Uh, good to move on? Thank you. Next public hearing is considered a rezoning for Celebrate Plaza. Open the public hearing. Please introduce yourself to the public.
Good evening, Mayor Pizzolo and members of city council. My name is Justin Gabrielson, senior planner here at the City of Goodyear. I'm here before you this evening with a request from Christine Gaye to request an amendment for the previously approved PAD known as Celebration Plaza. The site is located at the northwest corner of West Celebrate Lifeway and North Litchfield Road. The site is currently zoned PAD under the Celebration Plaza PAD. Celebration Plaza encompasses 66 acres of land and includes a mixture of underlying, underlying uses. Here's the zoning map for Celebration Plaza. As you can see here, there are several land uses under this PAD, including commercial as well as several different residential uses. Um, we can also see the location of the surrounding area with Interstate 10 here to the north, Palm Valley Crossing to the east, Palm Gate to the south, Airport Gateway to the west, and City of Hope tucked into the corner here. Currently, the PAD puts a restriction on drive-throughs. This restriction limits them to just one in the entire site. The proposed amendment will increase the drive-through from one to two standalone and unlimited end caps. That the, with the end caps, the drive-through user will be one tenant of a building constructed to accommodate a minimum of three users. Due to the site not being in proximity to residential, no neighborhood meeting was required. Instead, an alternative citizen review occurred and postcards were sent out to property owners within 500 feet of the site. To this date, no questions, comments, or concerns have been brought to my attention regarding this project. At the March 12th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, uh, one resident was in attendance and, um, was in support of the project, but did not wish to speak on it. The commission voted five to zero to forward the recommendation of approval. Staff is requesting that you recommend approval with stipulations for the PAD amendment to amend the Celebration Plaza PAD. I'm here for any questions as well as the applicant.
Any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Saying none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. City clerk plead raise ordinance number 2025-1629 by title only.
Adopt ordinance number 2025-1629, conditionally approving approximately 66.6 acres of property located at the northwest corner of Celebrate Lifeway and North Litchfield Road from Goodyear Celebration Plaza, planned area development to Celebration Plaza, first amended planned area development, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgment, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, providing for penalties, and directing the city clerk to record a copy of this ordinance.
City clerk, uh, city council, please enter a motion, a second to adopt ordinance number 2025-1629. I see a motion and a second up on the board. So open it for discussion. Uh, first one up, councilmember Terry.
Thank you, mayor. Justin, I don't know if, uh, you can help me a little bit, you know, being new up here. With this being a PAD, what was kind of the history of this project? Again, this project predates me quite a bit. There's a lot of multifamily. I see the commercial, um, that seems kind of tucked away, away from any main roads. I know this is general to section E. Um, what was the idea behind limiting to one? I know I'm asking you to, um, tell me what was on everyone's minds, but, uh, what, what was kind of the generalized idea? And I don't know if there's a history of this PAD, just a little more, um, a little more information on that.
Sure. Um, I think the idea of it was to kind of create more of a walkable community. Um, unfortunately, uh, I wasn't the original planner on this project. I'm kind of picking it up.
Hold on, I think you got, Christian's going to help you.
I, again, I apologize, chef.
So the history of the site was that back in 2008, it was a business park and the rezone was to incorporate more multifamily into the development. So the, uh, City of Hope was a portion of that. Um, when it went to more multifamily, part of the conversation was, um, allowing more employment opportunities with the office to the northwest and then the commercial limiting that, the drive-throughs again, so that with that high density multifamily around there, people could walk between the developments.
Okay. And so the idea has obviously changed a little bit since then if you're looking for, you know, more vehicle traffic, uh, in that area?
Slightly. The applicant is requesting some additional flexibility to have additional.
And then what's the status on, um, since this includes the PAD, the hybrid area? Has that, is that still a hybrid or has that switched over?
That time limit for that 24 months, we would interpret has lapsed. So if you did want to have further discussions on that hybrid piece, that would need to be included as a stipulation of approval.
Okay, I will, um, I will rest for now.
Councilwoman Gillis.
Um, I remember this meeting because it was my very first meeting. And so, and I remember that there was kind of a trade-off on the multi-level and, um, flex space and with the fact that there would be one drive-through and then there would be sit-down restaurants that would go in there because that's kind of prime property right there. And, um, I know that constituents that I've been talking to, um, and I'm out there a lot, um, are not liking all the drive-throughs that we're putting in. And I know that I talked to Katie not long ago about a couple of things. And if there's a drive-through already there, then I get the fact that possibly there, you know, if somebody wants to put in a new drive-through, then how can you say no if you put in one? But we have not put anything in there yet. And so the general consensus is that they want to start seeing some sit-down restaurants. And that is a good place to put them. And we talked about that at the time, which is why we did what we did. So, um, I'm going to stick with the constituents on this one and I'm not for this rezoning. So I want to let you know that. Thank you.
Councilmember Keno.
Well, I too remember this project. It was, uh, there was a lot of discussion. In fact, at one point it was tabled and it came back, uh, for further discussion. Uh, huge chunk of multifamily, certainly, uh, you know, trying to accommodate the, the developers' wishes and this whole flex thing. So I thank you for asking that question, uh, councilmember Terry, about what happened to that space because that's, that's hanging out there. Um, this is a significant chunk of land that is located on one of our major thoroughfares, Litchfield Road. And I think being its proximity to I-10 and you've got the Rudy's and some other businesses across, we wanted this to be a nice project. Um, certainly the idea of the walkable, uh, if you're going to have all that multifamily, you need things for people to do, which they incorporated the park. And, uh, really we had a lot of emphasis on that commercial space. And I think, uh, the reason was for, uh, the limiting the, the, uh, drive-throughs or the quick service, uh, restaurants, which I understand are very popular right now. I know in the report it talked about post-COVID, a lot of desire for people to, to get their food and go. But, um, we have that in other areas. And I think now we have a little of experience looking at Estraya Parkway south of I-10. On the east side, we've got a whole lineup of fast food restaurants anchored by a convenience store. And I think we had higher hopes for this, uh, you know, in hindsight, I'm not thrilled with what we did on Estraya. Certainly I'm not interested in, in repeating that, um, here on, on Litchfield Park. There hasn't been anything built on this property at all. And we're, we're talking about rezoning. I, I guess my question to you, when you want to change an aspect of the PAD, that's a rezoning for the whole entire piece. It's a 66-acre rezone. Is it because of changing the, uh, the drive-through causes the whole rezone?
Um, yeah, that's correct, uh, councilmember Keno. Um, unfortunately, since this all is one piece, um, even though the change is only affecting the commercial portion of it.
Yeah.
We are making a change to the entire PAD. Um, but I do want to, um, circle back to your comment on Estraya Commons, um, and the long line of drive-throughs that fronts Estraya. Um, you know, we've, we've taken that into account when reviewing this project. And the, when the applicant originally came in, they wanted to propose unlimited drive-throughs and no restriction on it whatsoever. Um, and we worked with them to limit it to two. And the important thing is the, um, unlimited end caps. So they can bring in those two drive-throughs, um, whatever they happen to be. And then the end caps is what guarantees us other retail space. If they do wish to bring in a third drive-through user, such as Habit Burger or a Starbucks or something like that, they would be required to include two other empty tenant spaces to be used as other retail space. So that would prevent us from having a repeat of Estraya Commons.
I appreciate that additional explanation. I think when I recall back discussions, we were looking for traditional restaurants, uh, with some accommodation for the quick serve. And, um, and it seems like that whole concept is now disregarded.
So sit-down restaurants can fit within the other tenants of those, um, retail tenants as well. Um, you know, they would be required to build a building that can support at least three tenants being one of them as a drive-through. So let's say a Starbucks would go in there. Those other two empty tenant spaces could be used for a sit-down restaurant, as well as there's still plenty of space on the site as well for another, for a sit-down restaurant to be dedicated for that entire site. Um, um, you know, I'm the one who did the preliminary plat approval for the project. Uh, and I do know that there are about four, uh, lots to the south and three to the north. And, um, so there's plenty of space for there to be a sit-down restaurant as well as the drive-throughs.
Okay, so with this stipulation, the two, uh, the drive-throughs plus the end caps, you could have a sec, four? How many, how many drive-throughs could you ultimately have?
With the end cap rule, as long as they are providing a minimum of two retail spaces, they could have upwards to as many as they wanted, as long as, as long as everyone passed the second one, well, had a minimum of those two additional retail spaces. Um, a few examples, uh, that I have found, so this is an example that is found in Avondale. Um, you can see here that this is what the end cap is. So you have Habit here, which is utilizing the drive-through aspect of the building along with, uh, a sit-down restaurant place, maybe even what could be considered a quick serve where you go in, grab your pizza and leave. But it does still provide for this sit-down, um, portion to be used. I mean, they even have an outdoor patio here as part of their restaurant. So this is being utilized as both a drive-through option as well as a sit-down restaurant option.
Very good. Would, this, this land has been emptied or has not, they have not built anything in there. Do they have any kind of timeline for development on pursuing this parcel?
I'll go ahead and let the applicant speak on that.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, for the record, my name is Tom Blake, uh, 645 East Missouri, not a resident, but, uh, representing the owner, uh, on this project. And I was here for the rezoning as well, so I appreciate the references. So I can, I can, I hope it had some flavor to that as well. Um, so we, we have no intention of making this, uh, auto-centric and, uh, completely change what we, what we talked about here in January of 2023 in front of you and then in April when we came back in 2023. What we're trying to do is entice the, um, you know, the top tier of the retail pad farm developers. And we're competing, uh, we're having a hard time getting their interest when they can go to the Estrayers or these others and have no restrictions. This is, I think, one of the few probably in Goodyear, your staff could tell me, that only has a restriction for one, uh, drive-through. And, um, certainly in the valley, there's very few restrictions like this. Uh, we have every intention of keeping the connectivity and the walkability and all the planning buzzwords that we had talked about before. We want this to be a great, great project. Uh, we just need a little bit of a safety net to get people, um, uh, the experts engaged in this to bring in, uh, great tenants of which would be, and I specifically remember the mayor talking about family members, um, you know, from the hospital that want to walk over there when somebody's getting chemo or something like that. We get that. Uh, we haven't sold this thing to a run-in gunner or a, a dump and burn kind of person. We haven't. This isn't in, this isn't, uh, in escrow. Right now we're talking to some groups, but again, it's been tough. But if we stick with it, we, we're confident we'll get somebody in here to do, uh, the right thing and have a balance. But it may end up being that we need one or two drive-throughs. There'll be, it could be higher-end drive-throughs. It's much different than five years ago, 10 years ago with the healthy options, the good restaurant chains, the A-brands and the B-brands that are now doing the, the drive-through or the combo. Um, but if I can, kind of one thing that, that we know on this thing, the hybrid piece was a big deal and you wanted more commercial office and less, uh, apartments. And we sat up here and we said with our market studies and everything else, we need that safety net because something is better than nothing. And we, we, we held the property for six or eight years and there, you know, that next phase of the hospital, um, or the medical complex, the, the, the um, or the medical complex, the, the, the A complex just didn't come. Well, through the, through the hard work of your staff. And what we did was we hired an expert on the medical office space, uh, right after the meeting a couple of years ago. We didn't come in here a day after a year and say, hey, we're going to just dump it and go apartments. We stuck with it. We still don't have anybody in escrow, but we're right around the corner from having somebody that I think your staff and your economic development, uh, senior management would say is somebody that's going to do a great job out there. And it's for the hybrid piece as well. So it's all 25 acres now because we waited, we're going to have, we're not going to have that extra 10 acres of apartments. Uh, we're going to have 25 acres instead of the 15 of the medical office, not of the apartments, which is exactly what you told us you wanted us to do. Um, but you were gracious enough to give us the safety net if we couldn't do it because we got to sell the thing at some point. That's a similar thing to what we're asking for here. We want to get people that know what the heck they're doing on the retail side of things. Uh, and give them the opportunity, we'll give them time, six months a year, whatever it takes to try to get the, uh, best tenants in here, the sit down restaurants, the high end, uh, strip retail tenants, whatever it is. It only helps us, okay, not just from the goodness of the heart, but from the greed standpoint, because that, we've got people that are going to be living next to this thing and they're going to be paying higher rents or higher prices for houses. The hospital stakeholders, the office, uh, tenants and the employees, they're going to want to walk somewhere and eat. Um, and, um, so this is again, and I wish I'd prepared something ahead of time to head off some of your questions. But, um, that's what we're asking for. We need to get somebody in here, we think, that, that is really good at doing this stuff. Give them the fair shot at an opportunity to get in the tenants that would, you'd be proud of and that we'd all be proud of. But at the end of the day, if this is what, you know, it defaults back to a little bit, if it's going to need to be a balance of it's right off the freeway and it's on an arterial, so there probably needs to be a couple of drive throughs, then that's what we're asking for, flexibility to do that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Counselor member Hampton?
I just want to ask clarification again on this one. So the change is you want to go from one drive through, any type of drive through freestanding to two drive, two more drive throughs, only if they have, uh, connected to three, a three or a four pack type thing? So I clarify what we're
Sure, yeah, um, uh, Councilmember Hampton. Um, so we are, the original restriction was one drive through, one standalone building with a drive through. Um, the change would change it to two standalone drive through buildings, um, with the unlimited end cap options, which is what's shown here on the screen. Um, essentially it would require them to build a building that holds a minimum of three tenants. Um, one of those tenants being a drive through. And then the other two would be required to be other retail users.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not okay with that necessarily. I'd rather make a stipulation where there's no freestanding ones. And this, and there'd only be a four, a four thing, a four tenant with an end cap on it. I think that would be better. If we truly want to get higher end and more flexibility, then I don't think a freestanding one would be optimal. So if that's an option for a stipulation where, yeah, you can have two drive throughs, but they need to be set up, set up like this, where you have more, more users there. If that's a possibility, um, so that's one thing. I'm not, I would not be in favor as it is now. So I'd probably make a stipulation where I'd want it to be, if you're going to do two, it can only be this style that we're looking at with Avondale right here. Um, and then the second question I had is, so you mentioned the, the whole things, we can take another bite at the whole thing right now because they're coming back and looking at the whole thing. Did you say that we need a stipulation if we want to change the D parcel? We could do that in this, in this program?
Back up to discuss the flex option.
Yes, that would require, um, some clarification, the stipulation. But, um, the applicant has indicated, uh, that it could be appropriate, uh, continuation of this item so they can do some reworking of the request.
Yeah, because I, if they truly, and I don't know if our economic development department is in favor too, but if they, I'm okay reducing it to whatever they thought the mix that they think they need, need 15 acres or a, a smaller portion of multifamily there, I'd be in favor of that. I mean, I'm just looking at, I tend to be very limited amount of I-10 space. Um, we didn't touch the pad and now Buc-E's, they came on their own because they noticed that. So I've, I've never been in favor of the multifamily here. So, um, I would like that reduced, uh, personally. And I know before, I think there's talk about a hotel or something to be at the top portion of that. We reworked it, the history of it, we worked, reworked it. So it'd be the highest end possible apartment complex, not a normal garden style apartment complex that we have, like the gray ones off near the Harley Davidson dealership or something like that. We want it to be higher end. So if they go rework it, I would prefer, I don't know. I know the market's changed. Good, we did our own study. Goodyear has, is full, we have full saturation of apartment complexes here. So I think the market has definitely changed. So I do be more in favor of if they're going to bring it back, we're going to push this out for another public hearing that they relook at the multifamily section up against the I-10. Because I don't, I know, no doctors are going to be living in these apartment complexes like originally thought. So, um, yeah, so your comment was that they want to pull it?
They would like to continue the item to a date not certain.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to provide some context that if, um, the council were to decide to deny the zoning request, there's a one year waiting period before we can bring it back before you. So if council does, um, is concerned about the request, it sounds like there's a lot of questions um, and direction you want to provide. We, um, the applicant would much rather hear all the feedback you have tonight and then see if there's a solution that meets council's goals that we could come back to you with at a future council meeting. You would need to act on that and maybe our city attorney can provide any additional information. So staff at this point would recommend you provide us any additional feedback and then we continue the item since there's so much comment.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate all that too. Because this is one of our last really full diamond exits and entrances to the city of Goodyear. Litchfield Park is, uh, is one of our main, main roads. I mean, for commercial and everything else. And same with Y Buc-E's is going in on the other exit. It's a full diamond, full exit as opposed to some of the other locations where they were talking about, like the apartments all along the 303 where you couldn't get on and off the freeway there. So I want to make sure the best and highest use is here. And I'm okay waiting. I mean, I don't, this doesn't have to be done with apartments today. I mean, we have time, we're in the forever business as the mayor talks about as well. So, um, so yeah, so I appreciate that. I'm okay with them coming back and taking our input and not being delayed another year. So, thank you.
Let me ask this question. You got a couple others that want to, have you heard enough to, um, have a continuance? Or there's anything else you want to add for feedback form? Let me, let me have, uh, I got the, uh, I guess Vice Mayor, uh, you want to speak?
I want to speak. I remember this item very well because I was told I was opposed to the multifamily housing at the get go. And I was told that if we did not approve that, none of it would go forward. And here we waited all this time and absolutely nothing has been done to that land. And I am not in favor of having a complete strip mall from Interstate 10 down to Celebrate Way because that diminishes what we're trying to do for this city. And, um, also if anything is done on that hybrid piece, I want it to come back before council because we need to have a conversation about that as well. We were hopeful that this would have already started to be developed and on its way. But unfortunately it isn't. And I don't think at this point it's going to fit well with everything at the opposite end of that parcel on Bullard. It's not really, all of that is not really compatible. But that being said, I'll be anxious for them to bring it back and tell us what they can do with it. But I'm absolutely not in favor of rezoning this property.
Counselor member Beckles, anything you want to add?
I don't have anything else to add. I've heard everything that they have said and, and I'm in agreement with the rest of the council. Thank you.
Counselor member Kano?
Well, I, I only, uh, signed back on because Katie had asked for feedback. And so I, this was a very difficult case and I, I think it would have been helpful if some of the history was included in the packet, especially because we have new council members. But we did, we did strike a deal for multifamily with them. And I, I don't think it's fair to say they have to start over from scratch. I mean, um, now the market's changed, maybe their vision's changed, but I think it would be a good time for a revisit. And it would be great to have an idea of what their vision is for parcel E because it's left to our imagination and we may not be catching the same vision. So, thank you.
Okay, one more.
I'm sorry, I have one question for Katie. Katie, are we the only city with the restrictions about the drive through? Like he indicated that it was just us?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Um, there are various restrictions and I couldn't tell you all the different cities. Um, we do not have a general plan or a zoning outright restriction on the drive throughs, which is why we brought this for, before you tonight because the staff and planning and zoning commission reviews are bound to our written regulations. However, as you all know, council has full discretion to provide direction and, and make, um, the decisions that are best for the community. There are a couple other PEDs that do have limitations on drive throughs in the city of Goodyear. Ballpark Village PED is one that comes to mind off the top of my head. But I know that there are, um, one or two others, which we can get back to you with that when we bring it for, um, bring this back to you, um, have some more information about drive through restrictions so you can make better decisions.
Thank you.
Let me ask the, uh, city attorney, do we need a separate motion here to table? How does this work?
Just make a motion to continue it, that's fine.
That's all, somebody? Got a motion here from the, uh, Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, I make a motion to continue item 10 of the public hearings for a future date.
Mayor, if you can, we're getting it up right now. If you can just give me just a moment to get that entered into your, into your voting system.
Okay. You, you got a motion and a second from the Vice Mayor here. You got it into the voting?
Yes.
Voting, motion to continue? Motion to continue, seven zero, thank you. Last public hearing is a development impact fee audit. Open the public hearing. Please introduce yourself to the public.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jared Askelson. I'm the finance director here with the city of Goodyear. Here tonight to conduct a development impact fee audit that is required by state law, uh, to actually do an audit every two years. Uh, this audit covers the period from July 1st of 2022 to June 30th of 2024. That's an important, uh, it's important to note that because we had two major things that occurred during that period. One, we had a new development impact fee study that was enacted during that period. So this audit covers across two development impact fee studies. The second thing is, is that we implemented a new permitting system, uh, for calculating the fees. Uh, we are required to bring in a third party from outside. Heinfeld Meach and Company is the same firm that does our annual financial audit and they conducted this audit on our behalf. There's five compliance areas that are listed in state statute. The first is the progress on the infrastructure improvement plan, the IIP. That includes both growth assumptions and the projects in, included, uh, in the impact fee study. The collection and expenditure of fees, making sure that we're collecting them appropriately and that we're spending them on the things that we said we would spend them on. Uh, evaluate any inequities in the plan or fees. Are we, are we actually implementing the plan as it was stated and adopted by council? Uh, are we offsetting appropriately construction sales tax where it's appropriate? And then finally, do we do the annual report that we are required to do as well? There were two findings that we came across, one in the area of progress on infrastructure improvement plan and the second on the collection and expenditure of fees. Uh, the first on the IIP was a variance of the, a variance of the plan to the actual results. And in this case, our growth wasn't exactly the same as what the plan had originally stated. Uh, and just to reiterate, the, the first plan was five years old at the time of this audit. So that's normal to have a forecast be off during that period. Uh, the mitigating factor that we have there is that we can then adjust our expenditures by, when we adopt the budget annually, we can adjust the, the projects that we're going to be using to spend that money. Uh, the second was the misapplication of impact fees that fell, fell under our second category. In this case, we had two instances where the fees were miscalculated, either based on the number of units that were in the application or based on the type of, of, um, the, the type of development that was occurring. Both those instances, we followed up with the applicant and have made corrections there. Also going forward with the implementation of the new, the new Acela permitting system that allows us to have additional approval process for fees going forward. With that, uh, we can open the public hearing and I can answer any questions or hear any comments from council.
Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing. This is for, uh, no action be taken, but does any council members have a question here? All good? Have a question, go.
So it's quite a process when we set these fees, there's a lot of engagement. So from this report, what do we glean from it? I mean, like how effective our, our fee structure has been? Or does it give us any indication of where we're going in the future with fees?
Thank you, Mayor Pizzillo, Councilmember Kano. The, the report itself, the audit is very focused on the specifically what's stated in statute. So it doesn't necessarily give us a performance audit per se. Uh, the, the important things that we glean from it is after five years, our projections for growth didn't match what we thought they would be five years ago. And the second thing is, is anytime we can, we can find a way to make improvements to our processes to eliminate errors, that's something we continue to do.
Thank you. Up next, moving on to business, we have two business items. Like to remind council to wait for a motion and a second for discussion. First up is going to update to the discretionary fund policy and budget amendment. You're back again, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm still Jared Askelson and I'll look at one that I'm still the finance director here. I got thumbs up, so we will continue. About five weeks ago, we had a council retreat where we discussed the discretionary funds policy and the amounts of the discretionary funds. Uh, one, uh, change to the policy itself was to incorporate the ability to carry funds forward. So we are now allowing for unspent funds to be carried forward for one fiscal year. But there's a limit of only going forward one fiscal year. So essentially in any one year, you could have two times the amount that's authorized. Uh, the second part is a budget amendment. In this case, we're doing a budget amendment from the city manager's contingency and we're using general fund dollars to increase the amount by $19,500. The new funding levels for the mayor will be $7,500 and each council member at $5,000. These changes will also be included going forward into the fiscal year 26 budget. And with that, uh, approval before you for the policy update and the budget amendment associated with it.
Thank you, any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Council, please enter a motion and a second to approve the discretionary fund policy update and budget amendment. See, I see a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think we've pretty much covered this one, didn't we? All right, open up the vote. Six, one. Thank you. With that, our last item is to consider the fiscal year 2026 annual public art plan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Guylin Oslansky, Parks and Recreation Deputy Director, and I'm so excited to be joined this evening with our Arts and Culture Commission Chairman Lisa Palos and Arts and Culture Coordinator Lane Ruiz. This evening, we are here seeking approval of the Arts and Culture Commission recommended annual public art plan for fiscal year 2026. This plan before you supports city council strategic goals of a safe and vibrant community and the vision to be the hub for arts and culture in the West Valley. As part of the Public and Performing Arts Ordinance, the Goodyear Arts and Culture Commission shall come before council and make recommendations for the immediate fiscal year and they'll, uh, recommend for the next five fiscal years. In tonight's presentation, the commission will share highlights from the past year and recommend projects for fiscal year 2026 as well as the future forecast for public art. Before we jump into that though, I did want to take a moment to take a little look, a deeper look at the Public and Performing Arts Ordinance and the role that city council and the Arts and Culture Commission play in the public art process. The Arts Ordinance has two key components. One, it formed our Arts and Culture Commission. And two, it gave us a funding mechanism for funding public art, which is up to 1% of our capital improvement projects. The ordinance also provides the The ordinance also provides the framework for the city's successful public art program. The public art process has four milestones. This includes project approval, budget approval, artist selection, and design approval. So this first milestone is what we're here doing this evening through the public art plan approval. The Arts Commission makes recommendations to council for public arts. They include the type of projects and locations and it's council's role to consider approval of these projects in the annual public art plan. With the approval of the art plan, we move into the second milestone and the second milestone is the budget approval. And this happens during your annual budget process and it's the council's responsibility during this process to consider the budget requests and council may increase and decrease the budget being requested for these projects at that time. The third milestone is artist selection and this is when we look to our Arts and Culture Commissioners for support. Council appoints residents to the Arts and Culture Commission who have expertise and knowledge in the field of arts and culture. For art selection, we rely on this knowledge so that the best artists can be selected and paired with a project that aligns with the artistic style and the goals of the project. And then the final milestone in this process is design approval. And again, we look towards our arts commissioners for this to fulfill this due to their expertise. During this phase, the commissioners work closely with the artists to ensure that project stakeholders and the public are engaged in the design of public artwork so it reflects the community's needs. These four steps continue to help Goodyear grow its successful public art collection. Now I'd like to turn this over to Lisa to share some highlights from the past year.
Thank you, Guileen. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Lisa Palos. I am the Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission. As the Chair, I have the honor of working with this wonderful commission and these amazing city staff to enhance the arts and culture in Goodyear. I'm excited to be here tonight on behalf of the commission to present our annual art plan. So our mission, I think we're back, there it is, is to provide leadership in developing a community identity through the arts that embraces, celebrates, and unites all of our diverse histories, beliefs, cultures, and aspirations. Some of our focus areas include public and performing arts, arts programming, and events. We strive to engage, engage and support the Goodyear community through art to create a sense of place that enhances the quality of life for Goodyear residents and visitors. There are many goals achieved through the mission and enhancement of arts and culture. These include driving economic growth. So in 2024, we had over 120,000 event attendees. At our most recent Jazz in the Park, I spoke with both Goodyear residents and visitors from other parts of the valley and I really saw the reputation and art-centered identity of Goodyear shine when a woman shared with me that she always makes an effort to come to our events because she doesn't have them where she lives. We often hear of attendees grabbing dinner before or after enjoying a stop at a local business or just making a day of it on their visit to Goodyear. Providing arts for all. Each year, our programming offers engaging opportunities for all residents from students to seniors, including our popular creative aging art program and Artist Call for Fine Art Shows and Public Art Projects. Advancing public art. You really can't take a drive-through Goodyear without seeing at least one public art piece, which only adds to the beauty picturesque scene of Goodyear. You might even see half a dozen on your regular commute. From permanent public art installations that create a sense of place, such as Guardians of the Wilderness at Fire Station 182, to temporary artworks such as our Veteran Day murals that allow community interaction, Goodyear public art is thriving. Building a culture of art. We have the honor of presenting our annual art plan again this year because of the commitment by the city and community to prioritize arts and culture through strategic investments, intentional planning, and active engagement. The culture of art is really thread into the fabric of Goodyear as we often see city leadership and council members enjoying their time, maybe a food truck or two, at our events. Our goal is to continue that support by ensuring our arts initiatives contribute to the community's identity, vibrancy, and quality of life. I'd like to share some of our highlights from this last fiscal year. Thanks to an amazing team of Goodyear staff, with the support of the commission, 20 city special events took place. A few to highlight include the resounding success of our In the Park series that include a fan favorite and easily our most Instagrammable event, Chalk Art in the Park. And new this year, Rhythm and Roots that connected the community to culture. In addition to our events, we offered 50 multi-generational programs, including the new teen art pop-ups at the Goodyear Rec Center on early release days on Wednesdays with some of our own commission members lending their talents to teach. From partners such as Catatute Arts, who facilitate teen art and senior art programs, to Sedona Arts, bringing vision and sound to Goodyear, to PW Litchfield Heritage Center providing our cultural lectures, we are so thankful to have the support from our diverse community organizations. One that I know that you were all excited about, your self-included mayor, is the grand opening of the Solid Rock Teen Center on April 26th, which will include another great public art installation with the addition of a heart done by the teens from the teen center. And we really look forward to the future programs and partnerships that are going to be created by the addition of Solid Rock Teen Center. There is a lot going on in Goodyear. So a couple of the public art projects that we'd like to highlight include what it can do for our city. So public art creates a sense of place. Goodyear is known for its beautiful and picturesque public art as well as events and performances. We're famous for our hearts and our traffic cabinets. People love them. Whenever I tell someone I serve on the committee, I always hear about their favorite traffic cabinet on the corner of something and something and how they love seeing all of the new art in town. We're truly creating a stunning, highly accessible gallery through the city featuring local talent. This includes many public art pieces that reinforces the culture and beauty of Goodyear. Second, it instills a sense of community pride. People love to be from beautiful places with a lot to offer. When I say I'm from Goodyear, people often say, oh, it's so beautiful there or tell me about a restaurant or event or a park they enjoyed. With the incredible growth in our West Valley cities, our public art makes Goodyear stand out by being attractive, innovative, and inviting. Third, public art provides cultural and social value. We offer arts activities that appeal to all ages of residents in Goodyear's. So many of our art projects, installations, demonstrations are interactive and they invite people to experience art regardless of their knowledge or talent. Fourth, it increases economic attractiveness and promotes development, having a vibrant city that attracts businesses, people, and tourists. People want to live in a place that offers opportunities, higher standards of living, access to quality education and healthcare, and overall prosperity. All of this contributes to the culture of art in Goodyear. I'd like to highlight some of our recently completed projects. So Better Together was created by Arizona artist Trevor O'Toole and it is one of our newest additions to our public art collection. One of the most unique things about this compelling bronze sculpture is that Trevor was involved in all aspects of it, from creation to concept design, fabrication, and installation. He respectfully listened to input from our stakeholders and our, until the design embodied the Goodyear Police Department values of empathy, optimism, and integrity. Another community favorite was the temporary Veterans Day murals. During the week leading up to the Veterans Day event, 10 commissioned artists created eight-foot patriotic murals at Civic Square Park. The community was treated to seeing art in progress. Residents interacted with artists as they painted throughout the week on their tributes to military service members and our country. I'd also like to take a minute and highlight several exciting projects we have in progress. So the Australia Bridge expansion connects the existing and new bridge, which includes a magnificent lighted sculpture by artist Barbara Gregoudis. All will be illuminated by June 2028. Ola West Valley is another innovative art project. Six West Valley cities and Westmark have partnered with local artists to provide site-specific art projects. The program connects West Valley cities and residents to arts and culture resources and provides mentorship for local artists to enter the field of public art. Goodyear is working with artist Joe Ho to create an interactive suspended artwork that will be showcased outside the Goodyear Aquatic Center. And then we cannot forget our fan favorite, Goodyear's traffic cabinets. We've just commissioned 10 artists to transform traffic signal cabinets into inspired works of art. And once these 10 are, 10 are complete, we will have 52 decorated cabinets across the city. I'd like to just thank you for your support of these programs and these events and I'd like to turn it over to Arts and Culture Coordinator Laine Ruiz.
All right, thank you so much, Lisa. What a great tribute to our, our commission's efforts and celebration of this year's accomplishments. My name's Laine Ruiz. I'm the Arts and Culture Coordinator here for the City of Goodyear. And now I'd like to switch gears and talk more about our future. As I review the recommended fiscal year 2026 public art projects, I would like to point out that each project has a recommended funding level. This information is provided only as context. With the approval of the art plan, you are not approving budget for the projects. This will occur during the annual budget process. As you see, we have some of our community favorites that we are planning to continue this year, including a new set of public art, light pole banners, pop-ups in the park that include temporary mural installations and art activations, and of course, the continued expansion of traffic cabinets. Now I want to dive, dive in a little deeper into our capital improvement program project recommendations. First up, we have our Bullard Wash Trail Extension. We are looking to have artwork to be integrated into the Bullard Wash Trail Extension. This project is a part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. It received bond dollars to extend the existing trail from the I-10 to the ballpark. The goal of this project is to establish a scenic and accessible trail system and enhance recreational opportunities for residents and visitors. By integrating public art into the trail, we will establish community connectivity, enhance the natural environment with unique points of interest, and celebrate the city's unique identity. Next, we have Fire Station 189, which will be a newly constructed building on the northwest corner of Citrus and Indian School. As part of this project, we are looking to add integrated artwork to be aligned with the construction process. Adding public art to fire stations creates a welcoming environment for the community, reflects the spirit and history of the surrounding area, and helps humanize these critical public spaces. And lastly, for FY '26, we have the GRC Phase Two. As outlined in the Fiscal Year 2025 through 2028 Strategic Plan, Parks and Recreation will be completing Phase Two of the Recreation Campus to develop the remaining 46 acres and expand recreational opportunities and amenities. As part of the expansion, we are looking to integrate an interactive series of public art to enhance user experience and create a more engaging and vibrant environment. And now we will take a look on what we have on the horizon. So this is looking past fiscal year 2026. The Art Trail at GSQ is a project identified in the GSQ Regional Center Planned Area Development to include three major public art nodes along Goodyear Way between 150th and Bullard Ave. The goal of this art trail is to welcome those that visit, drive economic growth, and create a sense of place for downtown Goodyear. And lastly, we have the Wildflower Park Renovation Project. As part of the park renovation, we are looking to add public art that promotes connectedness between the North and South Park and creates a sense of place for the Wildflower neighborhood. As you can see, Arts and Culture has had a tremendous impact on our city and has been a strategic focus for Goodyear. It's my absolute pleasure to celebrate our commission and discuss future art projects that continue to make Goodyear a hub for arts and culture in the West Valley. With that being said, I would now like to ask for the approval of the Fiscal Year 2026 Annual Public Art Plan. And that concludes our presentation.
Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Yes. Come on up.
Counsel, the mayor, counsel, good people of Goodyear. You're speaking about art and I wanted to kind of understand, will there be an art gallery here? Will you put an art gallery where people can sell their paintings and bring in artists from all over the world and expand on your art? I used to go down in the Bowery in New York and we have art galleries there. And people come in, matter of fact, I'm going to put one in my church, art gallery of the Word of God being depicted so people can come in and see the Word of God and paint and on great canvas and great colors and famous artists with their signatures on it. I'm going to bring them in. So I'm wondering if you would think about putting an art gallery in Goodyear and opening it up so that the people that are doing this great art can make some finance off it and become famous. And people will purchase it from all over the world. So just consider that.
Thank you. With that, let's see, we got several up here. Let's see, I got a motion and a second up on the board. And we've got a lot here to speak. So it looks like the first one up is Councilwoman Gillis.
I love, 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 and you know I love those cabinets. I can't stand it. I just love them and I'm so excited that you have 10 more. I just love them. You guys have done such a great job with those and they just keep getting better. So I can't wait to see the, the new 10 that you're going to be doing. Love, love, love them. Guileen knows this, I've been talking about it for three years. The other thing is, is Joe and I were both, the mayor and I were both at the Vet Event and the artwork that was displayed there and that they were doing there at the time was awesome and it was amazing. I, I just walked around, I had to walk around again just so I saw it complete. It was amazing. I, I'm so jealous of that because I can't draw a stick man, you know? So it was really cool watching them. So that was a great, great event. And I'm excited to see what is going to happen with the Bullard Wash. That looks like a really cool project and I may want to talk to you more about that privately. I just think that looks just like the coolest project. When do we think we'll have that done, by?
Mayor, Councilmember Gillis, that is FY '26 through FY '29 for that entire project.
Okay, so it might not be finished till '29?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, but we're going to start it in '26.
So yes, Mayor, Councilmember Gillis, we begin design and so much like you saw in the Australia Bridge project, design happens early with the project so the artists can be engaged in that and influence some of those design pieces. But then it kind of goes on pause because the installation of the artwork is kind of one of the last things that goes in. So there's, there's kind of a gap in time there, but in the process really make sure that the artwork is the best fit for the project and the location that it's at.
You guys, it just looks beautiful. That's especially with everything that's going in there. It looks absolutely beautiful. Well done and thank you very, very much because you know I'm big into the art thing, you know this, and I'm just so excited what the city's going to look like when this is all complete. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Terry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let you guys know, I appreciate the work that you guys do. It does get noticed. Just as a point of clarification, and Guileen, this may be a question. For you, today, we are approving the plan despite, you know, numbers attached. This is not a budgetary request, this is just the overall plan. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Terry, that is correct. So tonight, you're approving, you're looking at the projects being put before you. The dollars that were in there are just as context, but those budget numbers will come back before you during the annual budget process and then- and at that time, council will consider those budgets.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was a clarifying point as we move forward today. And again, appreciate everything done, especially as Councilwoman Gillis mentioned, the Veterans Day event. That work was very good. It was very noticeable. So thank you all.
Vice Mayor?
Sorry, I was just listening to everybody. Guileen, I love what we're doing, but I don't have a comment on that. But I would like to ask about the light poles. I love to see the light poles, and we've had this conversation off and on for the last 14 years. It would be nice if we could have pictures of our veterans or our active-duty military at one part of the year somehow, like Avondale does and Surprise does. And it would be easy for us to find out who they were by having folks nominate them. And we would probably have to say active duty rather than all retired because there's 50, 60,000 of us who are retired in the city. But I thought that would be really nice. And I like seeing the banners all year round, whether it's for baseball or whatever it is for. It really kind of livens up the driveway. So thank you very much. And I know the cabinets were the mayor's suggestion, and he is so pleased that they're turning out so well. We ought to have one dedicated just to our mayor.
No, that's okay.
So thank you very much. We're excited about it.
Let's see, up next, Councilmember Beckles?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for this outstanding presentation. I want to let you know that I did attend the teen pop-up the other day. It was very enlightening. And I just had some general comments. It's obvious that art brings value to our city, and I think that's wonderful. My note, before we got to it, it reflects community pride. I had already written that note down. It fosters dialogue between people, and it brings a healthy, healthy outlet for our youth. And that warms my heart. I just want to thank you.
Councilmember Cato?
Well, all of our boards and commissions do very important work, but you probably have the most fun. You're very creative, very innovative. You do a great job casting a vision for the future while you honor the past. You're really making a mark on the community that will go on long, you know, after your service on our commission. And what you do really does enhance the quality of life. And so, thank you for your good work. It's just so interesting that over the years, just with different commission members, it's just, the work is just always good. The people who get on are really passionate about the work. We've got great staff to guide the process, and we're just seeing the fruits of your labors, and we really appreciate it.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, not much to say, much left to say. You guys are doing a great job. I really appreciate all the hard work with the committees. The art definitely adds more sense of place and community to our community. Definitely makes a better place to live. And yeah, people love all the artwork, so I really appreciate it. So thank you for everything. I'm looking forward to trails, just the sense of place and all the cabinets and everything being done. So thank you so much.
There's not much to add except I love the cabinets, as you know. And maybe you can tie in with our new Teen Rock Center coming because I've seen their teens' artwork, and it's off the charts. So they've got some great artists that show up there and work in that place. So with that, maybe you can come up with some kind of concept on there. So with that, I'm going to head and open it up for a vote because I've seen the motions on the board. Passes 7-0, thank you. Does council have any comments? Because we're not done. We've got four executives after this. Council, have any comments, commendations, reports on current events, or requests for future items? Start to the left. Anything here? You, did you have something?
Yeah. I went to the Chamber of Commerce brand reveal this last week here. So we got a six-city chamber now. So Surprise that just came on board, El Mirage, and then the rest of the crew, Goodyear, Avondale, Taliesin, Litchfield Park. So a lot of excitement around that. So it's more of a regional, southwest, southwest, south, sorry. What's the new brand is, oh man, I just had it to my tongue. West Valley Regional Chamber is our new brand. So I gave everybody a little sticky pad on their desk. So from that event.
Okay, cool.
And they gave us a little plaque that I'm sure we'll put in our cabinets somewhere, saying that we're a part of the chamber. So yeah, so look for that. So if you see the name change, that's what it is.
Okay, cool. City manager, have anything?
Not tonight, Mayor, thank you.
All right, next meeting will be April 7, 2025. Now, let's see if I can get this all in one breath, all right? A vote may be held to call an executive session for the following pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3, and 5. Discussion and consultation with city attorney for legal advice regarding the meet and confer ordinance and memorandums of understanding with employee organizations for discussion and consultation with the city's designated representatives in order to consider its position and instruct its representative regarding negotiations with employee organizations regarding salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits or employees of the city pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7 for discussion and consultation for legal advice with the city attorney for discussion or consultation with the attorney for the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its attorney regarding the public body's position regarding contracts that are subject to negotiations for the discussion or consultation with designated representatives of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its representative regarding negotiations for the purchase, sale, or lease of real property involving the acquisition of land for future parks pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3, and 4 for discussion and consultation for legal advice with the city attorney for discussion or consultation with the attorney for the public body to consider its position and instruct its attorney regarding the public body's position in pending or contemplating litigation or in settlement discussions conducted in order to avoid or resolve litigation regarding contracts related to the collection of ambulance billing matters pursuant to Arizona ARS 38-431.03A, 3, and 4 for discussion and consultation for legal advice with the city attorney for discussion or consultation with attorneys of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its attorney regarding the public body's position regarding contracts that are subject to negotiation regarding a possible intergovernmental agreement related to a joint public safety training facility. I would like a motion and a second for going into executive. I see a motion and a second up on the board. Can they open up the voting? We're heading over there. You owe me after you put all that in there.